I guess we'll, uh, some of the pleasurable reasons.
That's my primary exercise. I'm looking for that.
We're here, right? I'll read some of my phone as well.
Oh, sorry. Can I?
Yeah.
John's gonna leave today. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, where it should under God, in this whole, with liberty and justice for all.
We're due the 2018 capital budget.
Are we getting down to business already?
I feel all warmed up pretty good. It looks like there's something we can do. Let's work, we need to get credit.
So, um, this is previous.
This is new debt.
Yeah, you've noticed me, so, so.
That's the way you're bringing it.
Yeah, sorry. No, you're not, you're not being asked for information today. What we'd like to do is run you through a little bit about the types of projects that our department would see in the horizon. And of course, you know, any questions, go right ahead. And, uh, and then we'll give you a little overview of where are these projects, the debt service associated with them, where they, uh, what it looks like over future time, what it does to our debt service or repayments. So that's it. The plan from here is if we can, um, get some feedback, if there's any questions, we'll answer what we can. If there's things we can't answer, we'll get you answers. We'll come back with a, uh, if there's anything that needs to be revised or, uh, or corrected, we'll come back with a new draft of this at the July work session. And then the hope will be to approve this at the July meeting and we'll have bond resolutions and such, um, to be able to implement the borrowing. That's the, that's the overview. And then, uh, yeah, that's it. So, um, so, uh, as Brendan might have mentioned, we, we met with the department heads over the past probably couple of months, actually, about time to break out all this together. And, uh, and discussed their various needs. The way this report, there's several different versions of a report, but we'll just work with one tonight, um, which I think is easiest. And that is, uh, this, this report you have in front of you is a yearly project listing or a project listing by year. And, uh, it's then further broken down by departments, so you can see what's happening in each department. But essentially, all of these projects, for example, on the first two, three pages are all for this fiscal year. The money would be borrowed, or in some cases, it comes from the operating budget, which we'll explain. And we would start paying on this in next year's budget. So this, so everything you see here would have an impact on next year's budget, which is obviously important. So that's it. So we'll, we'll start with DPW. I'm not, not going to go through every single project. There's a specific one that I might jump over because it doesn't look terribly significant. But if you have a question about it, just, you know, speak up. We have a standard project in DPW, which is what we call infrastructure maintenance. For many years, we used to borrow, um, can't say, okay, for many years, we used to borrow, um, money to do sidewalks and curbs and drainage projects. And the board, uh, at some point thoughtfully decided to put in the budget, a total of $130,000. So that $130,000 is already in the operating budget. So there's really no decision to make on how you made that decision, uh, which is why you see there's two columns. The first column is how much of that is to be bonded? And the next column is how much this whole project is? So that's why there's differences in some cases.
Similar to your paving, um, below, still.
Yes, exactly. So paving's a very good example. The third project down, uh, instead of borrowing 110, 120,000 every year, we successfully convinced you that it was wise to, to move that over to the operating budget and avoid having to pay interest on your debt. Uh, and it's money that you spend faithfully religiously every year.
So I mean, that's, I think that's, you know, kind of a big kind of global view of this. Things that are recurring payments probably should be in the operating budget. And I think that, you know, we started, and the police partners, the first thing, that, you know, we bought a car every year. I guess we buy two cars every other year. So that's kind of the way we kind of kept that one in. But, you know, it just makes for a lot more sustainable budgets, I think, than, you know, just kind of throwing things, you know, into, uh, to be bonded, which is obviously a lot easier on the, on the annual budget, but it's not incorrect.
And it's not always so easy, um, to make that transition. It's, you can't, you can't easily take a project that you're borrowing 120,000 a year for and move it into the operating budget because adding $120,000, as you know, doesn't always fit so well. So we, we did 30,000 this past year and we hope to do 30,000 in the future, but we'll see, we'll see what happens.
At least too late. Lee, you missed it.
Lee, we already talked about it.
Really?
That was fast.
Six o'clock. It was between six and seven.
My phone may be three, seven, and eight. I am so sorry about that, guys.
Actually.
Lee, can you get a good background from Jan and from Nancy?
Okay. And you can also watch this. Uh, demand by tomorrow, right?
I gotta see how it came out because we weren't, we weren't focused too much on the other year, but we'll see. But if you have any questions, my name's in back and my email's in the back.
Okay.
Great night. Thanks for coming.
Speaking of station road sidewalk.
Yeah, yeah, so. So there's a good example, the second project down, Station Road Sidewalk. It's, it's actually, yeah, so that's only the Station Road Sidewalk. That is, um, it reflects how much of it is being borrowed versus how much is coming through the federal government. So, uh, 850 from the federal government.
And Larry, by the way, kudos to you for getting that grant.
Yeah. You know, our, our grant writer did a fantastic job for that one. That was, I know people hear me say this all the time, that I don't expect to get a grant the first year, especially if it's an aggressive one like this. I really didn't. And, uh, and saved the Hudson View Park and we got both of them. So she's pretty in tune with what they're looking for, which is great. Okay. So other things you have, you have replacement of a garbage truck, which is a monumental event in this village. Since we've been totally riding out 20, 23-plus years, 25-plus years, I don't know much how old this one is, but, uh, it's pretty old, so.
You wash it every day. You wash it every day. It's 25 years.
I think it's becoming more and more critical for us to address it and not just let it scoff over as being just a nice kind of talk, talk. We better start looking at alternative fuel vehicles or anything with a lifespan of 20 years, 15 years. We gotta start looking now at things, uh, it should be mandatory for things like pickup trucks because now there are multiple sources of EV vehicles which provide equivalent functionality and performance to an F-150-type pickup truck and has also inverters so that you can plug power tools right into the dump thing up in the field. So you don't have to be operating gas-powered equipment in the field in many cases. So to me, we have a problem that no one is forward, it doesn't seem like anyone is forward-looking on this stuff to really come in and say, you know what? This year, I know that there are at least two models of these kind of high-end, not garbage trucks, but pickup trucks. And by 2020, every single major American and Japanese and auto manufacturer is promising to have EV equivalent, uh, of all of their current models. So the trend is there. And I just think the village has to jump on it because these things are long-term aggressions. And right now, the cost differentials are coming down very quickly. The cost savings are, uh, in terms of fuel savings are fairly significant and, um, the performance issues are a lot less than they used to be.
So are such things available?
I, I start out saying I don't know about the garbage truck, but, you know, I do know that there are things like CNG garbage trucks and things like that, and they may not be appropriate. But you've got large bus, bus fleets that are totally EV or hybrid. So things are available. Question is, someone's going to take the time to do the research. And the other part of it is, um, as we found out with the, the parking enforcement vehicle, there's major incentives from the state, and that one really, to really get into an EV fleet or an alternate vehicle, reduce emissions. And, you know, for the village, that's one of our biggest ways of really making a difference. So that's my preach.
I think it's great.
As, as much as you may not think your preaching to the choir, because I, I have been consistently open to the idea of the EVs, um, when they're available and when they're appropriate. I'm particularly interested in pickup truck. I know that there's a, there's a, uh, there's a brand out there that basically takes a Ford F-150 and compresses it to EV. So that, so the specs as far as towing and four-wheel drive and all that is, is unaffected. I'm waiting for it to be available. We don't have pickup truck in this particular year, so that's not, not an issue. But if, if the next time we do, if it's available, we'll, we'll buy it. I've met with, uh, at least one initiative through Sustainable Westchester. They hired a firm to, I forgot the name of them now, but, uh, and I raised my hand and met with them and he was all excited to tell me about everything that's available. And there was nothing that matched up with our fleet, except, you know.
Pavil.
We knew that the parking enforcement officer wanted the work. You know, there, there wasn't even a viable four-wheel drive vehicle that was reasonable from the EV standpoint to replace any of our four-wheel drive, not, not pickups, but just, you know, the building inspector car, for example. Now, there may be an app, but we're, when it comes time to replace, we'll look at it.
Sure.
You don't think you'd like to have like a Tesla?
I don't think you'd like to appropriate yet, so.
But I think, I think everybody agrees that we keep, want to do this. I mean.
My concern is just that.
When it's possible and when we keep our eye open, right?
And I think that, you know, I, I'm heart to hear that Larry Wes actually did go to that and.
Why, he came to me, but yes, I raised my hand.
So the thing is that this isn't an observation. Also, it's obviously, I was thinking about this some, and there could be some arguments, for instance, when the DPW is in them for snow, snow pillow, but there may be some issues, although these EVs supposedly have great torque and everything else. But someone like the Parks Department, someone like the Water Department, they seem to be, would be a shoe-in for this kind of stuff. So.
Yeah, when it's available, we'll.
Yeah, I wish I was looking for it. I don't see why the Water Department has.
Right, not getting a pickup truck.
No, they.
They got a new one.
So they do, yeah.
Well, yeah, they're fairly new, but if, I think if you go far enough along, you'll find them.
Well, so I just.
Why, and DPW.
Okay, next year.
I make, want to preach my preach on this one.
And Larry, just in general, when we're budgeting for a new sanitation truck or new, particularly on these vehicles, they're not waiting until the truck is actually broken and can't be used. They're, they're predicting that within the next year, that, that truck, whatever they're using, will be put out the faster.
So the, the way we go about it, especially in DPW, that they have a large fleet of vehicles, is, you know, they, they make, um, projections about the timing of the replacements. So you're going to see all the way to 2025 here, vehicle replacements in DPW. And again, that's all based on projections. When it, when it comes close, I mean, this sanitation truck, if I remember correctly, was probably on here for at least three years.
It probably just gets much after a year.
Just getting pushed. Well, I've been told at this point, the care, the point where the maintenance is, is getting beyond what makes sense. I don't know how old this specific vehicle is, so I'm sure it's in excess of 20 years. So, uh, it's, so it's time. So, you know, in this instance, you know, it's going to take some time to, to even make this purchase, but from the point you were proof of this, so they, they wouldn't have this probably until the beginning of the winter, most likely.
The same for pickups. They're scheduled, but then when, but then when it comes to the year that we're actually ready to replace it, you may say, I think we can get another year out of it.
And in some cases, you have to pull it over the air because, you know, things are in bad shape. So it's, um, I mean, generally, we push things out, it's, it's, they're, they're pretty good with their maintenance, so, um, but it's not, we're not keeping this in here and hoping that sometime during the year it dies and then we have to, because it takes, it takes probably four months to get a garbage truck, you know? So you don't just go into a.
Right.
So, um, talk about, a little bit about sidewalk tractor. That's, that's a new item, uh, out of replacement, right?
That, well, we've had it in the past.
Yeah, you're, they were.
Yeah, so this is, we, we don't need the industrial-sized sidewalk tractor that, that we could have purchased several years back, um, before we gave up the, the sidewalks. Um, this is a, a smaller model to help them take care of the properties that we are responsible to take care of, which is in and around DPW and various spots up and down Main Street. So it's really to try to, to make their job a little bit easier since, um, there's not a tremendous amount of manpower.
What happens to the old garbage truck once we replace it?
Well, yeah, we do, we do have one spare. And, um, if this one is better than the current spare, this will be pushed down, but.
Right, and, but then we sell the one.
It gets old, yes.
Okay. That was my question.
Yeah, yeah, we sell, anything we sell, in fact, we just had a whole batch of equipment that we put out. We do on an auction site, similar to eBay, but it's, it's for government purchases, government surplus. And, uh, you know, we, we'll get 10, 15, 20,000 dollars for some of these things.
From the truck?
Yeah. I mean, I don't know what we'll get for this one, but, but you can't, you know, we have people who like to use the parts and, and maybe there's people that are, you know, willing to invest certain amount of money to get it up and running. I don't know.
We're recycling.
One person's trash is another person's treasure. So, uh, let's see. So, and, uh, the last item there, West Sunnyside Main Drainage, that's an example of a project that's in our flood study. It's, it's work that the, uh, our engineers had recommended be done along West Sunnyside, which is, which involves replacing some of the drain lines and, uh, replacing some curving in certain spots. And it, it is part of an effort to reduce flooding in that area. That area has an unusual characteristic in that it's, it's very steep. But we do, so when we do get flooding, it's massively flowing amounts of water as opposed to sprawling, spread-out type flooding. So, uh, so there's certain infrastructure needs to be fixed there to prevent the various washouts that we've had over the years, um, to keep it moving.
Now, is this, is unlike one of the plans along Barney Brook, which you have to start down the river and move up?
Right.
Does this have that kind of logic in it as well?
This one, this one was, we were, the engineers assured us that if we start working upstream on Barney, on, uh, Station Road, or Sunnyside Brook, sorry, Sunnyside Brook, that, uh, this wouldn't be drastically impacted. So this one could get done, uh, kind of out of sequence because this is downstream, as you know. But these repairs, um, we could, we could do Hudson View Park before we do this. But if we go any further, and I don't think there are any more repairs, but if we, if there were to be, um, you know, this would really need to get done. This is the only other, this is the only other repair job along Sunnyside Brook.
And it's on our side, I understand, not on, it wasn't on our side, yes.
I don't mean to sound too.
Well, no, it's, uh, line's right there, yeah. Okay, so, um, I'll just, I'll pick off a couple. Firehouse roof, that's a supplemental to, to help pay for getting that, uh, completed. Just as a, as a point of observation, um, the bond company basically paid us the entire amount of the bond. I think I might have put those pictures in here, in the Friday folder. So we do have that money to work with, but, uh, I, I believe we're going to need more than that. And that's, this is an estimate at this point. If it becomes more clear, uh, what the right amount is, I'll change it before July, but that's an estimate for now.
Is that because the roof is continually deteriorating or because there's more things found?
Um, I think it's a, I think it's a combination, but mostly the second thing. There, there's just more to it than, uh, now that everything's open and you had it reevaluated.
And you have a 40-year lifespan, but.
Yeah, it wouldn't be hard for that long. It wouldn't, that should be changed.
Because we're, we're expecting at some point to actually have a way of getting half of that building, right?
Yeah, we would, we would hope so. But the, the lifespan that's listed there is not, is not our assessment.
All right, that's because the state.
That's the bonding.
Yeah. That's the maximum life that we could, we could advertise it over, but we will, we'll never advertise something 40 years. 20 would probably be the max. So we'll make that change.
Fireboat.
I mean, they, they've asked, they have, they have a fireboat. They're not asking to buy a new one. I think they, I don't know if it involves the engines, but they need, things need to be refurbished on that and they've, uh, they've approached us on that. I can, I don't have any more specifics than that, to be honest with you.
I know there's multiple, uh, crew members from different communities and urbanism, right? I mean, it's not just urban and fireboats, is it?
Is the police have this? Fireboats just.
Oh, is it just, sorry.
The police has the one, that's the River Towns Police book.
Right.
Dodge, and it stops casing and everything.
Right.
So we'd be looking for.
So, you know, with the, with the place where this fireboat lived until the orange, you know.
It's a challenge.
Um, what, what will happen with where it goes?
I don't know. I know that the, the boat club is working with the Army Corps of Engineers and, and contractor on the bridge, um, to, to get a repair done. I don't know what permits are needed. We're, we're kind of not really involved in that.
But, but the fireboat would be expected to go back to where it was when that project is done. I mean, there's no other place.
No.
For it.
It's, it's been a good place for that, with the lift and all that. Yeah, we've invested a fair amount of money in the lift and refurbishing.
The skeleton of the lift is still kind of there.
So is this a good time to get it refurbished while the anchorage is under repair?
I, I don't know what's good or bad, to be honest with you. Whether it's more beneficial, this is, this was on their list, um, you know, I suppose you could make that case.
I thought the boat was still in operation, but out of.
It's a town.
Or it's in the hall.
I think it's Tarrentown.
Pretty sure.
I think it's in Tarrentown.
Yeah.
It's at one of the, I think it's Washington River Club, though.
Yeah. Oh, sure. The interior office, we, we need to replace carpets and painting and stuff, I just want to blow off.
Yeah, no, there's things on the chowder.
We did have renovations up there. It's coming on 13th year. It's, it's.
What happened to your 1% art budget?
Yeah.
Good, so you're spending on these guys.
Right, on the new guy.
The new guy. I'm not sure, yeah, I'm not sure. Yeah, he looks younger, too, doesn't he? That's what I, that's what I. Not for the gas.
He's the guy on Broadway. I saw him, I saw him at a play.
The Sundance Kid.
So Larry, do you have any shooting range improvements, the second, do you think that's going to quieten it down?
Yeah, that's actually, that, interestingly, uh, before you got a couple of the recent complaints, uh, chief had been working on that. In fact, I may have talked to Brian Goddard, but anyway, he'd been working on, uh, coming up with some sort of a, uh, an enclosure there. It would be a fallout building, I mean, not for $30,000, but some sort of an enclosure that would help attenuate the sound.
Like a wall.
No, I, I, I thought I saw something like a Quonset hut, like a.
Like a band shell.
Yeah, yeah.
So it takes the sound.
It says the sound.
Some letter writers when that comes in.
Yeah, we just have to get some specific.
Because that's actually the letter writers, right? Maybe you say, hey, chief, we're working on this, like, actually, your capital budget's having money in there. It's actually, it's less money than I thought.
But that is on the same, this is the first page. I mean, these pages are becoming.
This year.
This year, fiscal year 18, 19, so we need to know more about it.
So you have to play the engineering plans and that's going to take a while.
Yeah, well, I, there may be, there may be a recap, if I'm not mistaken, but anyway, we'll find out.
Let's find out.
So the police car, obviously, is not going to be EV at this point?
No, but, um, they're, I have heard of locations that have purchased hybrids.
Yeah.
But again, I have to make, I want to make sure that, um, that they're specced properly and that they need the specs that we need, which is not unusual, I don't think. But if they're available, the, the problem is, the, the one bid that I looked at, uh, actually, there's a couple of bids, one of them is Los Angeles. If I'm not mistaken, they went out to bid for a hybrid police rated vehicle and what they got was a BMW, uh, hybrid. And the price was enormous.
Whoa.
So, uh, you know, I, if looking at that, I don't think, frankly, we would even have the resources to maintain it. So that didn't seem very viable to me. I mean, it's, I'm all about, you know, trying to save a little bit of, uh, possible fuel, but, you know, but the V M W rated police cruisers, I don't know about that, so.
The other thing is, it's interesting, of course, for the hybrid is that there's no heightening. It shuts down.
Oh, yeah, no, that's right.
So these 10-minute idling, could keep the car warm, doesn't happen quite the same way.
Right, yeah, well, it rotates on or whatever, but, yeah. Like I said, if there's a, if there's a viable, I have to make sure I always put that word viable in there. To me, that's a viable, if you think differently, let me know, but that didn't sound right.
That's what Americans take on cars.
That's right, yeah.
Can you talk about number five on that list?
Yeah, so, um, the, we need to replace, or, or something, and I think we still can have two of these. We need to replace the speed trailer that we have, it's, it doesn't function very well. I think it's easy enough to replace one, um, with a regular model. The chief would like to have one that is, that provides him with license plate reader data for other purposes, not, not to be used with a combination of the speeding data, but simply for, uh, for data collection, like the other license plate readers do in the, in the area that are fixed. So that's, that was his proposal. I, um, you know, I mean, I can give more details on that, but that's essentially where it's known.
Is our existing speed trailer, is that like somewhere that doesn't function anymore?
It's, uh, very clunky, doesn't function well, it doesn't stay charged, um, as well as it should. So, so we'll be deploying it, it's on and it's not, so.
Well, that's, I'm sorry, my mind is just bad, I mean, or is it still?
Um, no, I think there's a panel on it, but it's, I think it's, it's not functioning as well as it could. And the new ones, to be honest with you, I, I was pushing, we have money ready for this, so, uh, we're probably going to be purchasing a unit that, uh, will have the flexibility to have, uh, a small message displayed on it as well. If you recall recently, when we had the new stop sign going on East Sunnyside, Greenberg Police put up a variable message sign. It's basically a speed sign.
Yesterday, I saw her going to Town Hall to.
Oh, okay, I have it now, okay. That's right there, yeah.
So slow down.
Right, but it allows you to display a message. In the case, in our, in our case, they actually put it up ahead of time before the stop sign went up and it said stop, stop sign and it stole up ahead or something like that, um, to warn people. So, um, I think that's something that can purchase, but this is, this would be a second one that is also a license plate reader.
So, but I'm trying to remember, the, the issue about license plate readers and speeding tickets is that we're not allowed to do that, right? It's only New York City or someplace.
Well, yeah, cities.
There are, only cities.
Although there's new legislation that's just being, yeah, just being passed, so I don't know the specifics of the, yeah.
So if, if that were to happen, that the law changed, could we use this piece of equipment that way?
It's not, it's cameras. No, um, the equipment's actually pretty, uh, it's pretty expensive, with the speed cameras, the, the red light cameras, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's, it's, that's, that's what the legislation has approved, has been approved in other places, but they're considering for.
Europe has a lot of speed, cameras, speed, whatever, readers, but they definitely have in the U.S. I think it's only for red lights right now.
Red lights, all we have, yeah.
Oh, it's only red light?
Yes, this is not, yeah, there's, there's, there's a basic, there's a basic, uh, due process type.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that.
That's why there's special legislation.
The red light camera ones, if you plead guilty, you don't get points either, you just, it, it just, it's pay a fine.
Yeah.
So maybe.
Because all they want is the money, you know. Which is what the tractors are constantly saying, so it's, it's.
I mean, just hearing that, that discussion earlier about Station Road, which of course, you know, I know, but I don't know this in a legal way like Larry does, but the, the way in which that speeding on that road is so prevalent, and we're doing so much with our, with our police officer, but it's still such a problem. I'm just thinking, if we're spending police technology, you know, how can we find the technology that would help that area? It would be, that would be the place to do it, I think.
I mean, I didn't, I don't.
I don't know what it is.
I don't wanna get into a debate about it, I didn't want to before, but, um, I understand, I don't live there, and I understand that there are anecdotal reports, but the data that we get back doesn't show a compelling problem, right?
Where are we documenting?
It's like inspection room, but it's not speeding per se, it's maybe going over the line, or.
And, and it's also, it, it, it's also too fast for conditions, essentially, so that's essentially, you know. So, so doing twenty-five on Station Road is way different than doing twenty-five on many other roads, you know, because it's so narrow, so.
And that's what causes the inability to stay in your lane.
Right, right, and, and also feeds, it also feeds a long perception that people are going excessively fast. Well, they are, but the data, it's.
I, I know, I, I know.
It's very difficult, because, because then, then you get into enforcement, and, you know, it would be really unusual. First of all, the speed limit's twenty-five, even though we have posted a fifteen, it's technically twenty-five. So, you can't have a police officer get you a valid ticket for doing twenty-two, you know? It's just, it's a real catch twenty-two, I think you really have to work on, as much as you can, signage and, and education and.
I thought they could ticket for, uh, the same driving condition.
Yes, you could.
But it's harder.
That's a, it's a, that's a tough one to win, I mean.
But I did notice, I'm just, in a second, we still have, psychology, we still have a twenty-five mile an hour sign where the radar sign is. It never got changed to our fifteen.
But I have a list of things that I have with Greg, so I know that, I know that there's a list that we went over, so I have.
Yeah, so anytime that psychology, if we can get all of that down, maybe people stop thinking that the, that, you know, it's a play by law, so.
I know this is off the topic, but when, I'm just, we're looking at capital budget, and it just reminded me that we, whatever the technology is out there that becomes available that could help this, and I don't know what it is, it would be nice to invest in it.
So if we do, you alluded to it before, any of these data collecting technologies come brought.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
And they're, and you think, um, this week's New York had a great summary of articles about that, like, you can't collect, uh, you can't keep sensitive, measurements from outside a house, and then lots of them from marijuana growing, I mean, there's just been a raft of lawsuits about this, and.
We can watch the theater spinning around.
Yeah, so.
I'm sorry.
Let's go on to the next one, okay?
I'm not a police officer either.
Or a pod car.
Yeah, no, not at all. I, um, what else? Okay, so, uh, recreation parks, uh, there's a, there's a variety of items here. I, the, the senior center fire escape is, is by far the most urgent, there's just holes in it, so that's, that's a, that's gotta get done for real. Um, the Gator vehicle that they have is in need of replacement.
What's the Gator vehicle?
Oh, it's a, it's a, it's a four wheeled vehicle that is what?
Like an eighteen?
It's like, it's the size of a golf cart.
Oh, okay.
But it has a, it has a.
Do they see it parked out here sometime, or, no, that's not the recreation one?
No, that's not the recreation one.
It's to be used in the, um, Burlington, what's it say, on the trails?
Okay.
No, but the Gator they use in the parks.
October, yeah, they, they use. They got a Rocktoberfest, they bring it along.
It's a utility type, so, so they, it's in need of replacement, and they're, but they do plan on purchasing one that's, has a slightly larger, larger bed, because it'll be more useful. That's, that's that. Also, the backstop and wall field fencing has been, uh, on our list for probably four or five years. We've, we've, uh, continually bumped them from year to year. Um, this year Joe was, uh, pretty adamant about the fact that the fencing is requiring more and more, uh, repairs. There's, there's places that, where there's pieces missing, and there's, you know, bent areas and.
I think it's a safety issue.
It's really a safety issue, so they, you know, this is, uh, fencing, certainly in Cedar Hudson Park, it's been there for twenty years now. Um, and I think that also includes, uh, Memorial as well, which has been there, I mean, I, you know, I don't remember the last time it was replaced, so. That's a need. Um, Bolton boards, it's listed under Recreation and Parks because Joe has a hand in it, but it's really a, a joint project between Greg and the theater, and, uh, and so I think the plan is, is to put two Bolton boards, possibly three if they can fit it, which will be, one's a theater, one's a recreation, and the other's kind of one that is always in demand, uh, by a lot of different groups. Um, the plan is that we're taking, that, it's a, it's a Bolton board that can accommodate two, well, a one four by eight panel. Four foot by eight foot panel, that's a typical sign that you see out there, or two four by fours next to each other. The, um, wayfinding design project that we did, did not have four by eight design. It has one that's smaller, uh, like in front of town hall, ones that are designed there. Um, so, but they're taking that design and, this is the sign manufacturer, the plan is to take that design and, and turn it into a four by eight, without blocking cases, you don't need all that up there, you know, it's like you do it in front of town hall. Uh, so that's the plan, so they're just coming up with a design, it's gonna be followed by a wayfinding design.
Has an official color wheel, you don't decide.
Right.
I'm surprised we're not looking at, I was gonna say, those electronic billboards, you know, they seem like, it's a cost effect at some point, but I'm sure nobody would like that with lights. No, I actually think of that.
No, no, I'm good with that.
The bat lid, it could, the, the.
They're all.
No, I. Actually, like, whenever they were using, they converted over at, uh, County Center. Are bright enough to see in broad daylight right there.
That's right.
They're bright enough to see in broad daylight.
Well, I was just, I was just saying, worry.
Well, I, 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 I know that this is needed, I mean, when the, the farmer's market needs space, and the theater needs space, and the recreation needs space, and some other thing needs space, and I know it's a constant concern, so I think that's a decent investment.
I think, sure, that's pretty good.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know how the attention is.
Try. Yeah, that's the intention, yeah. Um, the fertigation system, so, uh, just to explain, in Cedar Hudson Park, um, you know, we, we are pesticide free, but that doesn't mean there aren't treatments that we use that are non pesticide treatments, that, right now, uh, we need to apply them annually, so it takes a significant amount of labor to go around and introduce it into the, to the areas that needs, needs to be done. Fertigation system is something that, that works, um, we actually have it down there, but it, it doesn't work anymore, and it's, the design is very poor. It was put in where the park was put in. It's a, it's a system that works in tandem with the watering system. So, it, it essentially introduces the, the, uh, the treatment.
The farts.
At the beginning, the farts at the beginning, uh, so that when the grass is watered, that's how it gets applied, so, um, it'll save a significant amount of manpower, so they're, they're pretty, I was, I was ready to push this one off then, when I realized that there's this pretty significant labor savings that comes along with this, that it, it's, it would be a good investment.
Not a big number.
No, it's not a big, but just, but just to explain, this is just the physical pump, or whatever the system is itself, or the regulator. Yeah, well, whatever it is that introduces it at the right rate, at the right time, and frequency and all that. Uh, so the last two are, maybe, just a quick explanation on those. The, um, senior bus is in desperate need of replacement. Um, we've signed on to the C B B G program, and the, the, the plan is to submit, uh, for fifty percent of the senior bus. That's the most that they'll fund, um, if, if we're funded. Um, it needs to be replaced anyway, which is why they have the full eighty thousand here.
Would be less by forty?
Yeah, it could be less by forty thousand. Um, the, the twelve passenger transport van is also in need of replacement, and, but we may be able to get away with one or the other here. Uh, if the senior van, senior bus gets replaced, they may not be able, they may not need to replace the transport van. Uh, if the bus isn't replaced, they'll be putting more reliance on the, on the van, so it's.
I'm trying to picture the transport van. The bus, the senior bus is the white one, you get it on the side.
I think the van is green, it's grown green.
Oh, that's twelve passengers, oh, okay.
Yeah, but they don't, I mean, they use it a lot for transport of, of stuff, not people all the time, but, um, if, they also use it as a backup when the senior bus is down, so that's, where these kind of go in tandem here, so, uh, we're putting both in here for now, they're not big numbers, they could get smaller.
But that one, that one can't get the C B G V because it's not aimed at seniors, unless you say it's.
That's used occasionally, which we never be able to.
I just wondered about having both vehicles on the same budget cycle.
Right.
Or if it would make sense to stagger them.
It, it could, but what I, what I would suggest is that if, and we can slide, slide the van down to the next year, for example, and then what will probably end up happening is, is, uh, if we don't get funded, or if we decide not to replace the senior bus, well, maybe we'll accelerate the van and move the senior bus back, you know, we'll, we'll flag around it, but, so what's a one that you have, which makes sense?
And alternately, if, if there's a van available, sure.
The bus, I don't know, I, that's, the question with the bus.
I mean, there's a lot of hybrid stuff out there now, especially for public transportation.
Okay. Okay, we'll look.
Not that I'd expect Joe to actually have the expertise to.
Nope.
Someone's, someone's gonna have form.
We'll, we'll find out. Um, and after, I'll ask my contact through Sustainable Solutions during town.
They should be doing something for our contribution. Is it our fast enough contribution?
I didn't see that, you said. Um. I, I did talk to Greg about the lighting system, I.
It's probably lighting systems and controls and the voice.
Yeah, that, yeah.
I think it might have been antiquated, you can't get parts anymore.
My understanding is, like, they even like the bulbs now, they have, like.
That's right.
Okay, you get bulbs and fuses and everything, so.
Wow. Yeah.
Yeah, you put any of that, it's good.
They, they need for replacements, we'll have to see.
Yeah.
They are. Yeah, they do.
Why not?
Yeah.
Leave us a little more, so.
Yeah.
So the issue of the year in which, if the entrance project goes through and a grant, I didn't see it on the theater, a bigger, bigger expenditure for that.
Right, so, um. I think that's a placeholder, so.
It's in, it's in twenty, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two?
Twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, yes, so.
I just didn't turn it up yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, here's.
Pretty wild.
Yeah, it's far out, I know. Here's, here's the thing, um.
Two point five million.
That has a one hundred percent wild ass gas, okay? And I'm not ashamed to admit it, because we don't have our reports back yet, we don't have our feasibility study back yet. So, this is a placeholder, the, the, this is the entrance project, so, and, and by the way, it's, it's pushed out to twenty-one, twenty-two, not because I don't feel like doing it in private, and I just, it, it was, it was my estimate of what it would take to pull together the funding for that size project. Could it be sooner than that? Sure. Um, we'll know a lot more after we submit these, hopefully, two grants in this consolidated funding cycle. We'll be, but that's, we won't hear about that for another six months, probably. But we'll learn a lot more from that, and then we'll have to refine our estimates, so, I, I just don't have enough information to even put anything that, um, you know, uh, is, is set in stone, and it certainly isn't. So that's why it's out there, so it's, there's a placeholder there for it, we're acknowledging that it's out there. To be honest with you, if you noticed, I also didn't even put a number that is very big in terms of a commitment on the village side of things. That's gonna be the subject of a whole host of conversations that we're gonna need to have with your volunteers and people in the community, so, I'm not making those decisions, I'm just putting placeholders there.
Looks to run up years, that's all.
Yeah.
Now I see it, okay.
Yeah, look, we can, we can argue about where to put it, I, I just tried to be as reasonable as I could based upon what I know today, which isn't a lot, so. All right.
So that we, we, I mean, I know we adjust these things, the ones that are the out years, we adjust periodically. So if we did get this grant, and we did get this, uh, and then the project looked like it was moving faster, then it might move up in years, yes.
Totally. Yeah, plus we'll have a better idea of numbers, and how much to expect from outside funding, and, I mean, the committee hasn't even started their fundraising yet, so.
They're writing their letter.
We haven't got.
They're the grants.
Right, exactly, so we're really early here, at least, we haven't placed a, I mean, we'll keep working on it, it's, it's a, it's a working document, I mean, you know. Anyway, um. All right, so, just a piece of equipment that is in need of replacement, it's, it's, uh, yeah, they use that to, to, uh, to pour clean lines from the blockages and whatnot, so, uh, it's, it's reached the end of the two, so let's finish. Yes. Um, River Road Water Main Replacement Engineering. So, um, as you know, there's been a few breaks down on, uh, what we call River Road, but it can be called Bridge Street as well. Um, so, we're doing, we're, we're asking for engineering money to design a replacement of the water main that's down there. Um, we're also, my, my plan, if it all comes together, is to have a working design in hand, and, uh, and apply for, uh, water funding from New York State. Uh, there's a significant amount of water funds that have been available in recent years, um, through the, through the state budget. Um, they will fund projects. Um, we're not, it's not the most competitive application based upon the criteria that I saw, because we're not, it's, we're not in, uh, uh, dire need of, of replacing this main, because, uh, it's gonna cut off potable water to a neighborhood or something, I think that's not the situation we're in.
And that can't function.
Well.
The jobs would be.
Tax rent, so.
Yeah, the jobs, people that are down there.
Right, and so what I'm hoping is that, um, I believe that there's a, uh, private water line on the, on Bridge Street properties. Uh, at least that's what Jimmy believes, that there's a private line there, and I'm hoping, uh, that there's a way of, uh, refurbishing that to create a loop, which will create redundancy for businesses down there, and, and, and that they may invest a portion to do that as well, to, to create that redundancy for their tenants. And, and I think that would strengthen the application in terms of kind of a public-private partnership, uh, type thing, so, we're trying to be creative about it, but the first step is to do the design, because the safe one will not fund anything if, uh, if you're not ready to go.
So there's a certain discovery that has to be done, because they don't know if that line is.
Maybe.
Uh, he thinks it's there, but what state is it in?
Yeah, yeah, there's a lot, there's a. Some of that we, we, we need to talk to them about.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
Um, but we need to do the engineering design just for the replacement of the line that's in the public Bridge Street, you know, the public line there.
So this brings up a different related question I've mentioned in the past, but I'll mention it again so Larry gets to hear it. Um, and I know there's a lot of surprises in terms of the amount of information that's been recorded, and what's been, you know, what's been found, what's been lost in the ages, but do we have an age map of the water system for the village, for the utilities in the village, you know? I know that, uh, James had talked about, that he has some of that information, but not consistent for everyone. And so that seems to me to be, you know, one of the risk factors, I mean, obviously, we've seen multiple breaks in fairly rapid, uh, fashion down at Bridge Street, which causes issues when, you know, the businesses, the restaurants are, take fairly large losses every time they're out of service. So you just, so, you know, what I'm trying to get at is, you know, I, I know that he's got a lot to try to pull that together, but, is that, is that information sort of forward projected into, not based on, you know, the leaky pipe is the one that gets fixed, but is there some other kind of modeling that's done that says, we really gotta do this nape, but at some point in time?
Yeah, I mean, the, um, you're right, there is not a single go-to source of, you know, of the age and the installations of these pipes in one place. Uh, there is forward thinking going on, and you'll see that in a project, which is the last one on this list, which is the engineering for the mountain road, waterline replacement. Um, you know, that one based on, based upon our assessment of the condition of that pipe, um, needs to be replaced. Um, is it, has it, has it leaked in the last year or two years? I, I don't think it has. But it's leaked in the past, and the condition. But it's leaked in the past and the condition and the way it was installed on rock and it's, it's in bad shape.
Yeah.
There's been a lot of breaks over the years, so, um, so there is forward thinking from that standpoint. It's not as simple as saying, well, you know, that line was installed in nineteen thirty-two, so therefore it's scheduled for replacement in two thousand and twenty-two. It's not that simple because, um, these, these pipes, if they were installed correctly, can go forever, many of them.
When I pushed Jim on this, he talks about repairing the valves. Yeah.
Yeah, there's some, you know, but some of the, some of the pipes may be, you know, might have been in the ground for, I don't know, a hundred years, and the technology then is much different than now, so in terms of.
Right. Better built.
Some better. James, during our, um, Main Street meetings, someone once talked about the condition of the pipe incoming down Main Street and that the opportunity to replace that might be an opportunity to bury the other ones.
Right.
At the same. Yeah, we've talked about that, sure, and the costs of, when you, if you were to say upgrade all of your utilities, then the cost of just digging the hole becomes kind of the major cost.
If you're going to dig the hole, you might as well fix everything, which I think is hard.
Yeah, I, Main Street Waterline Replacement is not on the radar. I asked Jim about it. Um, we, the condition of the lines is not a problem on Main Street. We've had.
We've certainly had some breaks.
They've had, they've had breaks over the years, but they've been, um, they've been, in some cases, breaks on service lines, so they were, you know.
So it wasn't the main line?
Yeah, you know, and so, but there have not been significant breaks. Um, you know, things happen with, with pressure changes and things like that that can cause problems, but it's not, it's not a, I don't think you're going to see a recommendation to replace the Main Street lines from top to bottom anytime soon, probably not in our lifetime, to be honest with you.
But the Mountain Road one is because of the, the topography, because of the rocks and the.
And it, and it wasn't installed.
That might have been in the.
Forty years ago.
The twenties or the thirties.
It's not, it's not that long a line.
Oh, no, really?
Sixties.
Sixties, no, do anything well from the sixties.
Yeah, there's other, there's other lines. Yes, they don't run, it doesn't run only down Mountain Road. There's other lines that cut through the woods, maybe going to reservoir, that go through tanks. Those lines are fine.
Okay, well.
So this is a, Mountain Road is a very, you're, you're going to see later on, we're not going to go through it tonight, but you'll see as you browse through this that there will be a very large project to replace the Mountain Road water tank, water, it's two million dollars plus, I imagine. Um, but we'd have to get started on the design process otherwise. And, and, and then I need to look for funding, which is going to be exceptionally difficult for that particular line because it doesn't serve a lot of people. It doesn't serve a hundred privileged neighborhood. It doesn't serve, it's not a threat, it's not a threat to their potable water supply, although it's an inconvenience certainly to have water lines break, but.
Let's come up with a security.
Maybe. It's right on the border between.
It's not the easiest and most fundamental project.
Where is this guardrail reservoir?
It's about that.
Do you go?
So.
Yeah, I believe there's pieces up there, uh, along Field Point Drive and where the reservoir is, and I think we want to extend that, uh, for security reasons and things.
So, so when you're, when you're going up, uh, Cyrus, Cyrus, do you see that?
Yeah, little building there.
Little building around there.
Yeah, so let me, you know what, I, in the road, you'll find out the details in a few, um, because I can't, I can't recite exactly where it's going to go.
So for the outlook in years that did we change? Do you have like maybe one or two highlights showing the hall?
Well, yeah, no, not, no, I wasn't going to. I wasn't going to go through.
Maybe three.
Don't have to worry about that. Um, you know, we.
They should pick some.
Yeah, yeah, just plenty of opportunities in the future. Um, nineteen twenty, there's renovations to Matheson Park that have been talked about for years. Um, the, uh, let's see.
Too much.
Yeah.
Good bill out of Chuck.
Yeah, that's.
Elevators.
Yeah.
That's putting a lot of money into the fire. I need to make the obvious statement that, yeah, but it's like five hundred thousand dollars in just a few years and then.
Well, we'll see, we'll see where we're at when it comes to that one, you know what I mean? We'll, we can reevaluate that if it, if it looks like we're close.
I mean, at some point, you're spending so much money, it's like. It's like a bridge you're, you're turning off with a car. When you turn it, my old one, the replacement cost going forward, look like it's going to be much more than you might carry, you know?
No, it's, it's not a location issue for that. Yeah. So, um, we all police books, I mean, firebooks.
That's really.
Anything else? So, um, let's, okay, I'm sorry for, uh, selling down, but, um, I think it's a good discussion. Yeah, no, no, I know, I just wanted, uh, I'm going to get moving on to.
Shut up, too.
So just, I'll, I'll hand this out, we don't have to go through it tonight, um, but it's, it's a very quick, uh, snapshot of future debt service. I think you probably mostly all see this.
So the pipeline is twenty twenty-one, huh?
Yes, so, yeah, well, uh, that's, that is true. So here's, here's, here's what we try to do, just as a general rule. So, um, the blue is our existing debt service and, um, as, as entire bonds come off the books and get retired, like let's have two, uh, where it drops significantly, that's when you, uh, if you can help it, that's when you introduce, um, some of your larger, more difficult projects to digest, uh, and you introduce those notes here to try to keep your, your overall level relatively flat. So if you look, if you look at the top of this graph, but of course, nothing except for flat, flat, but, um, I mean, we could keep it flat, but it won't be anything on. Um, but, you know, these are, the, the debt service in those, in those first few years where there's new projects recommended, it's staying in a fairly tight range, actually. It's within a half million dollars, one way or the other, up or down, so, um, we're trying to, uh, there may be some further just moving going on, but this, we, when we look at this, uh, we look at this to, um, to really help, uh, keep a steady, steady flow here so you don't have, uh, major impacts on your operating budget because you have, you have to pay for this in the operating budget, right? Because the amount that you're paying every year.
And you know, you think it's going to be added, right? I mean, get into twenty twenty-four.
Forward projection, it's.
Yeah.
It's never going to go down.
No, no, of course, but, but you know, I mean, you, you see this budget here, we, we only go out to twenty-four, twenty-five, which is actually pretty far out, if you think about it.
So in our municipal budget, we're taking out bonds. You know, rates just went up today. What's the range of expected change in, in rates going forward for us compared to what we've had, where I know it's been a very stable, low rate environment?
Right.
So, yes, until.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it's something to consider at the fall.
Yeah, so, I mean, there's, there's two types of fund financing that we do. Um, when we, when we don't have a huge amount of new debt, and when I say huge, I mean, you know, four, five, six million dollars, that's pretty big for us. We just have a million dollars of debt. We don't issue bonds for that. Uh, we issue a one-year note because it's just not big enough to spend money. I mean, there's a lot of fees involved with issuing permanent financing. So we issue notes on a one-year basis. The interest rate on notes is probably somewhere in the one percent for its vicinity, maybe it's one point two, I don't know. Um, will it go up directly as a result of today's actions? You know, the, the municipal bond market is connected, and Brian probably knows more about this than I do. The municipal bond market is connected to the regular commercial bond market and the government bond market, but, um, there are different characteristics, not the least of which is the fact that it's, it's tax exempt, or at least it has been in the past, and we can still it. Um, so there's, so there's little, there's subtleties on, on how they get, uh, connected, but, but we're in the, in the low one percent range. When we issue bonds on a long-term basis, I don't know when our last issue was, or two thousand and sixteen, probably, seventeen, sixteen?
Uh, I think that was in like four.
Oh. Last time we issued, and, um, it was, what was it, two, was it in the tubes or was it for?
I can look it up.
Yeah, either way, it's probably, let's say, two and a half percent, maybe. Uh, but that's for long-term, you know, twenty, twenty-year bonds, you know, for permanent, permanent basis, so.
That's, it's still kind of distorted well, you know, like until you get kind of, you know, seven percent probably. So, you know, it's going to be the next three years, I, we expect rates to go off.
Yeah, yeah, but I wouldn't say, if, if what you're getting at is, is, you know, do we accelerate projects now to borrow while rates are low? Um, you know, you could certainly do that on an individual project basis, but, but the more projects you, you start, the more the interest is, the least, well, it worries, it's paying the principal, that's the problem.
And just based on the next couple of years, you know, it doesn't look like we want to.
Yeah.
Any more than we do.
Yeah, we're not. So, so we, we don't, um, we don't, we don't have enough projects that we, to, to be able to play the interest rate market, you know what I mean? So we, we just, we're pretty steady as we go.
If this, um, is adopted, our total, uh, amount in bands, we've got seven million.
Right.
So it's going to.
Then we'll, we'll probably be issuing permanent financing pretty soon, maybe this year.
Um, once you're over ten million, the, the band law gets to.
Yeah.
Different, you can't, or whatever.
Yeah. All right.
Maybe it's.
Something's.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. Little people, low zero.
Um, for the next, first I have to call Mary Ann, I want her to come over, um, so she's here at the right time, but.
Priorities.
Priorities, do you, yeah, right. Do you, uh, what was attached to the agenda was the unmarked version? Do you want to work with the marked version or you don't care? Either way. I have a marked version.
Must take time.
I need it. Okay. I didn't say that. I just. Just probably. Let me just make a quick call, Mary Ann.
I can make this.
Oh, it's just wrong.
Oh, it's just.
It's just wrong, right? Yeah.
This is bad.
What you give her?
She's good.
Hearing's getting better, huh?
What? I can't say.
I could not hear the, the engineer, like, the younger blonde or one.
I think their average age was like twenty-six.
Yeah, I know. But I'm saying, even younger.
Even younger, yeah.
That's.
Yeah.
You know, we have the, uh.
Can we consider listening devices for this room?
Yes.
We are, yeah.
We, uh, Larry's actually looking.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're looking.
It's not a big, uh, I don't think it's a big expense.
Oh, no, we just have to identify what.
Yeah.
And make sure it integrates with the audiences.
Especially because this is also the courtroom, so it's.
Right.
I think there ought to be a, a grant for that, for court, um, you know, people in the courtroom.
Could be.
Access. Why wouldn't that be covered by a grant?
Yeah, they have, there's a justice courtroom. We can look, we can translate.
But of course, before you decide, I'm.
It's pretty.
Mine, it works with mine.
All right, so, um.
Yeah.
Can we submit?
You just basically put in the ideas that you got, right, from?
Yeah, I, I responded to the, well, there was a chain of emails.
Yeah.
I incorporated what I thought, there was a couple that I was unclear about, which we can talk about, but, um, uh.
Yeah.
But other, but, hey, I'll, I'll bring up the, um, I'll bring up the ones that I was not able to address to see if you add some color to it. First of all.
It's in color.
Okay.
So if it's on the black, if it's in this one, then you figured, you got it, you understood it, and you put it in.
Yeah.
So it's there, but the other ones are the ones you're going to talk about.
Yes.
Okay.
And there's other comments, we'll pick those up too.
Um, where are you starting at the top?
Well, no, I have, I have a little list of the emails that went around about comments.
I am sure everyone will be having a very full agenda with my man.
Yes.
Yeah, so when she comes over, we'll, we'll.
Fill it.
I think it looks fine, the first.
Okay, all right.
The final version that you sent around was impressive.
Yeah.
Captured, okay.
Well, but there's some kind of.
All right.
So, um, the, uh, Larry asked about how to characterize where we stand with the police union. I left it the same because I, I think it's still accurate, but I don't know what, like, I don't know what other color to add to it.
Which number is that?
Number, uh, revised, yeah, number three in the first area.
I just received a FOIL request from them this afternoon.
Okay. So, uh, I don't know whether there's.
I mean, I guess my only question was, it's still considered a collective bargaining agreement even?
Yes, I, I think it's not, it's, it changes, it could change day by day, so I don't know that it's worth it to keep the wording up here. I think this, this is sufficient in my point. I mean, it's still collective bargaining, how you get the new one is the issue.
So it's completing the process, no matter how.
Whatever that process happens.
Whatever that process entails, even if, right, if they're perfect process with the one we would prefer.
Right, right. So that's why I did do it with that. Um, okay, so, uh, Larry also had, um, consider upgrading of the long-term initiatives, paragraphs one and seven, to improve board oversight of committees, boards of departments. So, um, I, I, I think maybe some of the numbering might have changed in, in what I.
Yeah, I'm not computing.
Yeah, so, well, the one, the one that I deleted, number one, previous number one under long-term goals, was implement changes to operations, technology, policies, the operating.
Right, so that's what I was.
I had.
Right.
Yeah, so then the old number seven was perform long-term departmental planning, including periodic reporting to board trustees.
Right, so I was just, I mean, in my mind, you know, what, I just felt that there might need to be more, more defined oversight, or more defined roles that the board has in, 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 in working with the departments and whoever their liaisons with. Um, maybe just a better, you know, I think I mentioned this before I even started, you know, perhaps just a better definition of what liaisons do, um, and perhaps, you know, not to make our workload any more than it already is, but, but perhaps some kind of of report by liaisons to the board about. Now, not, look, it's all well and good that I read an email that I get from Joe, you know, and it says what's going on, uh, you know, on a bi-monthly basis, but, you know, maybe something a little more in depth, you know, either the, you know, joint report or, um, you know, just a blow over.
Okay.
I didn't, I didn't have it worded any better than I would have. I did want to say that I would represent that just quickly. I know that there have been a couple of times in regards to the land use boards where we've taken action because things have come forward either from a liaison or from another trustee or being, being aware of a situation that needed to be addressed, so that's not a, a functioning department, but it's another aspect of.
Well, you know, not casting aspersions, but for the farmers market to be able to commit to spending, that's for something that we probably would have approved had it
I know that there have been a couple of times, in regards to the land use boards, where we've taken action, because things have come forward, either from a liaison or from another trustee or being, being aware of a situation that needed to be addressed, so that's not a, a functioning department, but it's another aspect of.
Well, you know, not casting aspersions, but for the farmers' market to be able to commit to spending, that's for something that we probably would have approved had it gone through the role, the roles, but, you know, we're told to answer this.
So, Brian and I and Larry and, and Brenda were, were at, but, um, it wasn't as though.
The rest of the board wasn't, so.
What?
The rest of the board wasn't.
Yeah, right, true. I think I did mention it, but I don't think I mentioned it like a big deal, but, um, or maybe Brian mentioned it, we talked about, anyway.
Right. But I understand the point.
Yeah, I, it's, yeah, it's a question, when we have our little reports at the end of those meetings, and the question is, how much does everybody wanna hear about theater meetings I've been to, or this, or the thing you've been to?
But I think it's a little, I think it's a little different, I think you made the point, too. It's one thing about appointing, about reporting on what's coming up, or results of meetings, whatever.
Right.
But another thing is just kind of how it's all working, right? Like patients.
Exactly. I took, it's not the general news, but it's one of oversight of the process.
Right, exactly, exactly.
Like, the way that we've been pushing to try to get less paper into the planning board and the ARB and all that, and, you know, the need to get those folks to get into a room and settle the issue.
So, so I guess the way I've seen that is if something is a, a problem in functioning, you know, it might be something I've talked to Larry about, is the administrator saying, I, you know, I noticed this, you know, is this something we need to do something about? And then if it's like a, a problem, or it's, you know, we, we do this, we take care of this, so I, at least that's the way I view the, the, to, to bring things up that you notice.
And also, you have occasionally, I had an issue in one of the departments, and Brian and whichever rest is liaison.
Right, right.
And I think to the, the liaisons sometimes are so varied, you know, from, you know, kind of farmer's market, like, doing, it's completely different.
Right.
You know, so it's, it's hard to, I, I think I can understand, like, you know, some kind of standardization, but there's also, a lot of them don't have anything, uh, like, real liaison to some board that almost never meets, or whatever.
From a practical standpoint, and this is just from my years of observation, it's also varied on how the trustee approaches the assignment.
A hundred percent.
So, there's, and, and a lot of it is not based on, it's, it's not just, oh, I don't feel like doing it, because obviously you ran because you're a public servant, you wanted to do this, but it's a function of the practical aspects of it. I mean, if the only night that the recreation parks committee was six o'clock on a Monday night, you'd probably never be there, you know, I mean, and, you know what I mean? Like, so it's a function of your. We've had trustees that work in, and they, they don't go to library board meetings, you know, or whatever.
So, maybe they're assigned to the wrong.
Right, I mean, but it's, it's just, you take on a different role.
Yeah, but also, but, but the end result is that, but, is ownership, you're assuming, you're accepting your responsibility.
Right.
So, so if, you know, if the rec committee meets, what we're meeting, on a Wednesday at a work session, which they mightn't be meeting tonight, for all I know.
Right.
I'll still find out from Joe what went on at that meeting, and I'll be with him on my own time to find out what went on, um, because you've got a responsibility for doing it. But no one's ever, like, I never got a list of what my responsibilities are as a.
But you're proactive.
Sometimes.
Yeah.
I'm smart, so you, you make decisions about.
And I think in some cases, if, if there's, if there's some direct communication, either to Brenda or to Larry, I mean, there's a way in which the issues come up, or get expressed somehow to somebody, if, if, if needed. I mean, there are library things, I mean, the library director comes to the department at meeting, I mean, she doesn't necessarily have to go to Janice and say, oh, yeah.
I don't go to the meetings, I don't go to all of them.
Yeah, yeah, but, but even so, that, that could happen by a different group than a liaison. And nothing stops Joe from coming and bucking to Brian, or, so I think there are kind of multiple ways in which the communication happens, um.
Well, why don't we, rather than, um, rather than decide exactly how it should get improved, why don't we say that the, the, the goal here, and, 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 I don't know if we wanna keep it in the long term, we can debate that, but the goal would be something along the lines of, um, improve the, the reporting and communication with departments to assist with their long-term, achieving their long-term oversight, I don't know, you know what I mean, instead of taking a little different angle?
Yeah.
That's good. I'll reroute, why don't we do this? I'll, I'll write something, you can take shots at it offline.
Yeah.
Fine. All right. So, okay. All right, um, the. Hold on, let's see, there's one more, you know, one, two. No, I think that's it. Those are my only things that I couldn't, couldn't change. So, I, I just wanted to point out, and, um, before we get on to any of your other comments, that the, um, the goal regarding, uh, using technology and updating efficiency is something that, um, that I recommend is moving up to the, the area primary focus. And the goal is, uh, the real focus of the goal is to, uh, to, to work, to analyze our operations and come up with ways, uh, that make the delivery of the services to the residents more convenient and efficient for the residents.
Your job at number seven.
Yeah, um, and, and not necessarily, it may be something that saves us money, it may be something that's more efficient on our side, it may also not be, but, but at least analyze those areas where it can be more efficient and more efficiently delivered, um, to the, to the resident's schedule as opposed to our schedule.
Right, I just went to a conference where they described it as moving the friction, you know, between, you know, for us, it's between patients, you know.
Right.
Make it easier to make an appointment for patients, make it easier to let them know their lessons. That's all getting done by text messages.
I mean, is it a new process that your office has to learn, or our offices have to learn?
They aren't happy on Tuesday.
Yeah.
Well, I think that's very good to look at, I mean, it's, we are public service servants, and we're here to try to make life good for our residents, and there are whole different ways in which all this happens now, so we're gonna, we gotta talk about it.
Any other, you have topics?
If you run through, I won't take too long. On the, on the very top, uh, bullet item list, I thought comprehensive planning review, that seems to be missed, in the wrong tense now. We've done a comprehensive plan review. We've got a, you know.
Where are you reading?
It's more like.
Physically, you're beginning.
It's more like the implementation.
Right, it's more like implementation, right?
Yeah, well, that's really number eight.
Exactly, and that's why.
I think that needs to get moved up.
That's why I'm saying that if it's, it's no longer a review, now it's do it. It's implemented, you know, it's.
Right. But I was just wondering what.
I can be reading. This is, this is your one you sent out.
Oh, oh, yeah, 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 I'm sorry, you're looking at the very top, yes.
Absolutely.
Yes, yes.
That just wasn't updated, I don't think.
Yes, you're right.
I just think that the, the tense of it needs to change.
You're right.
I didn't even look at it.
So, number seven, which we were, just, I'm trying to go really fast, number seven, which we were really just talking about, I thought, uh, technology and license, policies that will improve sustainability, efficiency, and delivery. I was just putting the sustainability in there, because there's things that we might do, just because, for instance, the whole notion of putting the comparative water usage onto the bill.
I know, I know, but.
I know, but see, that's a, not an efficiency, it's not any, it's really a sustainability, it's an educational thing for the public to be able to understand if they've changed. So.
Yep.
So, uh, so number eight, we already talked about, that it's, okay, number two, ongoing initiatives, number two, I thought it should be mentioning the round-tapping corridor project at all. Sure. That's number two, I, I can give you this red line. And then you had some bullet items, and I thought one of the things you said, uh, complete the installation of an, and has crosswalks in Rockland, work at First and College, Metro North, to complete sub, and one of the other bullet items I thought would be really been focused on is trying to figure out how to look at crosswalk technology for our, for Main Street, to see what we can do there, and even though we don't have a grant for that, per se.
Right.
It seems like that's been a focus, we've talked quite a bit about, do those blinking lights work, is there something else?
Sure.
You know, so to me.
I have this thing about, I think it's still in there, about looking at all the aspects of the, uh, streetscape plan.
It's in there.
Oh, it is, yeah.
Um, and then you had number eight, under that ongoing initiatives, implement a system of importance review for all departments, encourage active two-way feedback. One of these things, I just wonder, do we need to, should there be a buy date type of thing? A couple of these things keep occurring every year, every year, and yet they don't fall off the, even if they're in the ongoing or primary area, they don't have a closure date, so it's always.
Maybe we just need to look at this.
More.
At least once, you know, like, in the middle of a year.
I think we're at the ones when we automated it.
I know, and if we don't look at it.
That's first week, I looked at it carefully, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that, when I, um.
I know, we, I look at it.
Look at what's in red.
Well, yeah, sure. You're supposed to look at what's in bold. But the, that, that document is formatted exactly to all of this.
Exactly.
So, it's. How, how do you want to?
Maybe even quarterly review, you know, like, this, the first, the first, uh, first work session of the month, we just, you know, we spent 15 minutes going through and seeing. Cause I, I know I, you know, the more I get a report, the less I look at it, so. Especially.
I mean, but.
Yeah.
I just wanted to scan through a couple of long-term goals, really quick. I thought number one, update process for building permits inside of it, that really should not be a long-term goal, that should be, that should be a primary purpose or an ongoing initiative, we need to get that done, and, I know it's, it's more like ongoing than anything else.
Yeah, I put it in ongoing, because there are improvements that are made, but.
As long-term to me makes it sound like we can keep making excuses for it not to happen, even though it happens incrementally over time, to me, it's more ongoing. I think it spans any other regulation approach, it's a lot of, in comparison, isn't that already part of the comprehensive plan process?
And we have support for affordable housing.
Elsewhere, it's tough, yeah. To me, it's.
So, I'm, I have number, uh, five on long-term goals.
Yeah, that's.
Is that seven?
Yeah, I don't know, maybe it has to be locked down, not more specific.
Mark's just questioning whether it belongs on here, or whether.
It's already covered elsewhere, in terms of both the comprehensive plan and the other thing about affordable housing opportunities, which is somewhere, right?
It's in the overall goal. It's, uh, it's up just for the year, or it's up six prior years.
I'm sorry. Not, I'm not doing through the times to the meeting, but it's just, it's getting worse, so are you questioning whether that, why that's there?
No, just, it was already, it was already included in the updated, you know, in, in act, in act the comprehensive plan, so.
That is a repeat, that is a repeat from somewhere else, and it's already included and stated, basically, because we have the comprehensive plan.
They would do it for now.
Line.
Okay. I was just trying to reduce the numbers of those things.
Right.
We'll keep it in. Number six was.
I'd rather overstated than understated.
Yeah, right.
We've already talked about in terms of looking at techno, in the planning process. Number six, uh, you probably talked about in terms of technology elsewhere.
I'm sorry, six in the long-term goals?
Yeah. The problem.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The planning, and I just said, you know, specifically, we, we have to make sure they're tracking what's, you know, there's a lot of enabling technologies coming along that could make departmental jobs.
Right, that's captured in that first hole.
I'm just.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Can we take that one out, because it's?
No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna send it around, that's the one that's gonna get revised, based on our first discussion that we had, about improving communication, all that.
Oh, right.
All right, it's gonna, the only, I, unfortunately, I feel like we've lost, we've lost the initiative to try to look at, uh, things like microbeads up here again, I wish we had something like that, that has a long-term goal, and we're trying to, that, that's that one, not, not from that Main Street, streetscape, that couples it with so many things, but seems to be like so elusive, monumental, chaotic, exotic.
One of the things I really had here, Larry, is a reminder, um, we wanna enact a law so we can, uh, effectively enforce the sidewalk clearing, but I had a reminder to do in June, so we can do it over the summer before, but yes, so.
You'll have it for Monday. No, 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 let me talk to you.
We talked about it, like, two weeks.
You mean a font for, for not being. Right. I was gonna give it to Larry for the, for the meeting.
There are a couple of the dumb shirt quotes, no, does anyone have anything on this, um, something related to checkers, parkland description, and perhaps an overall review